All right. Good afternoon. Can you hear us, Dr. White?
I hear you just fine.
Oh, thank you very much. City Councilor Sean Kern here with the Chair of Health and Human Services, Brian Santinello, Chairman Brian Santinello. We have the City of Springfield Director of Health and Human Services, Helen Carlton Harris, along with Ken Chang. You were asked to testify. We also have a member of the general public here. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, John Shinholster. I'm the advocacy director for American Veterans for Kratom Safe.
Okay. Welcome.
Consumer Advocate.
Welcome.
Counselor, I didn't mean to interrupt. Attorney Moore also on the line for Zoom. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person, but I am attending the meeting.
Well, thank you, Attorney Thomas Moore from the Springfield Law Department. And just to give a quick background, you know, kratom is really kicked off in the public consciousness last couple of weeks. Republican newspaper did a major story on it in its Sunday edition. And basically, the twist in the story was really that kratom could be really a warning sign for the next opioid epidemic as it is appearing in a lot of overdose deaths and toxicology reports. And here in the city of Springfield, we were able to ban synthetic cannabis. And this was perhaps another drug or synthetic drug on the menu that we were not familiar with. So I asked our city solicitor, Stephen Bonacani, who has now joined us along with Thomas Moore, Tom Moore, to see if they could put together a ordinance to address the kratom situation. And to the law department's credit, within like a week, they were able to put together an ordinance that really covers a lot of the bases that we were concerned about. And in the meantime, I was able to reach out to a couple of experts in the field. And we're joined by Dr. White of UConn School of Pharmacy to give some background to those in the room as well as the press. Dr. White focuses on clinical pharmacology, nutrition, self-care, ethics, and leadership, and sustainability of healthcare system. He's been selected for Teacher of the Year four times, received the university's Higher Teaching Award, and the UConn Center of Excellence Teaching Learning Teaching Fellow. Dr. White has appeared in major TV and publications, NBC News, Good Morning America, PBS NewsHour, CNN, The Dr. Oz Show, WNPR, The Boston Globe, The LA Times, Washington Post. And he has a segment on NBC 30 in the Connecticut Hartford area that reoccurs on a weekly basis. So just to, and we know your schedule is busy, Dr. White, but can, just to kick this off, could you give us a little background on kratom, your understanding of kratom, the fact that it's not FDA approved, that here in the city of Springfield, you can walk into certain convenience stores as well as gas stations by kratom, and its effects on teenagers, how it mimics heroin, and just your overall opinion of it as you have an expertise that we just are not usually familiar with?
Yeah. So why don't we start here? Because kratom is a lot of different things, all under the same umbrella. And I think that some of the nuances really is really important. So for hundreds of years, probably before this Dutch botanist ended up going to Southeast Asia and discovering that people there were using the leaves of this Mitragyna speciosa tree for medicinal purposes, kratom has been has been used. In the 1970s, there were Vietnam veterans who were addicted to heroin. So back in the day, they had a campaign against cannabis products, but they didn't have a campaign against opioid-type products. A number of veterans ended up becoming addicted to heroin-type products during the Vietnam War. And some of them started using natural leaf kratom as a way to treat their opioid addiction. Also, some of the immigrants from Southeast Asia coming to the United States had brought it with them for the same kind of purposes. So what I want to focus on is from that point from 1831 all the way until the 2010s, not a lot of people had heard about kratom, even though it was available in the United States since the 1970s. But one of the things that changed in the kratom world in the 2010s was that people started taking the leaves and they started extracting one of the alkaloids from the leaves and then taking out only one of those alkaloids. And that alkaloid was called mitrogynin. And mitrogynin is a partial opioid agonist. So it's a very weak stimulator of opioid receptors, right? And so by taking it out and then putting it into this other form, they did several things. One is that natural leaf kratom is naturally bitter because it's like, you know, sucking on a leaf, right? And it made you feel very full because all you're doing is taking this ground dried leaf, right? And you're using that as the product. So it has all the things that leaves have in addition to these alkaloids that would make people feel full, right? So by taking that stuff out, you could make it be tasteless, and you could allow people the opportunity to take higher concentrations of mitrogynin than they would be able to tolerate if you were giving it in its natural form. Not a lot of bad things had happened, but the risk profile was increased a little bit because you allowed people to be able to enhance the dose of mitrogynin. And then because you were only having the mitrogynin instead of all the other alkaloids, you were losing this entourage effect. So kind of like giving THC alone versus giving THC along with all the other stuff that you would get in a cannabis product, including CBD. But the next major thing that happened is that toward the end of those teens and into the early twenties, some people started taking this degradation product of mitrogynin called 7OH or seven hydroxy mitrogynin. And they started enriching the products with 7OH, right? Spiking those products. And what's important to know about 7OH is that 7OH is equally as potent as morphine, right? So it's a little bit more potent, but it has the same addictive potential as morphine, as oxycodone, as all the traditional opioids. So when that started coming out based on the animal studies that they were looking at, and I'll show you what the summary of the animal data shows in a second, I became extremely concerned that this could be something that could be starting the fourth wave of the opioid epidemic and trying to get a new generation of people hooked on opioid-type products. So after that spiking, somebody decided to really jump the shark. And they're like, well, why are we putting mitrogynin in these products at all? Because it's such a weak opioid, why don't we just have a product that has 7OH in them? So they created 7OH concentrated synthetic products, and they made their debut in late 2023 with virtually zero dollars in sales. They now have billions of dollars in sales in the United States, and it dramatically changed the utilization patterns on why people were using traditional kratom products for why people were using these products. And a lot of the sales were occurring, not be, you know, not just because a number of people were trying those products, but because over the short period of time, people started using massive doses of these products as they got tolerant to the effects, just like you would do with regular opioid products. So you may have one person that would go from using one or two tablets a day to someone who was spending thousands of dollars on those tablets every month. And then people started tinkering around with that 7OH chemical molecule, turning it into other analogues of 7OH like mitrogynin pseudoindoxyl, and now MGM 15 and MGM 16, trying to refine some of those opioid-type effects. So as all of those things happen, and I can show you the data if you're interested, but the number of EMS calls, the number of people that were going and calling poison control centers started going up. But what was happening is not a lot of people realized that there's all of these different types of products, starting from the natural leaf and then going through four different iterations where people were making it more addictive and people were making the products more dangerous. And so a number of the initial reports are coming in and they're saying we're having a problem with kratom, not that we're having a problem with certain kratom-derived products that are dangerous for people. So let me show you this. This is whole leaf kratom, and here are all of the different alkaloids. And it's actually two dozen, but these are some of the main ones that are there. And you can see some of the effects that they're having in the body. And you can see that some of these alkaloids are stimulating opioid receptors, usually in a partial or very weak manner, but some are actually blocking opioid receptors. And some have effects on serotonin, and some have effects on alpha-two stimulation, which could help to reduce some of the withdrawal. And it's this milieu of all of these alkaloids that meant that a number of people who were addicted to traditional opioids in the first wave of the opioid epidemic started turning to kratom in order to be able to treat the opioid addiction that they were personally experiencing, right? So what they found when they were doing this was that they were more likely to be able to care for themselves, to be able to care for their families. They were less likely to inject opioid-type drugs. They had less risky sexual behaviors. So from a public health perspective, the anecdotal evidence was suggesting that kratom in people who didn't have access to or didn't get good benefits from the FDA-approved therapies like Suboxone and Methadone and Naltrexone did have this available option. And a number of people were using those products for that. There were a lot of people who had chronic pain syndromes who were pulled into using opioids for their pain, who ended up with hyperalgésia, which meant that when they stopped trying to use their opioids, their pain was actually much worse than if they had never used opioids before, right? So they were stuck in this cycle of needing opioids to be able to treat their pain so they could function. But the opioids were making them very sleepy and making them unable to go about their normal business. So for those people who ended up converting over to using leaf kratom products, they had felt like those leaf kratom products were giving them a better ability to be able to function. So these are no kratom product, right? Whether it's whole leaf or anything else is FDA-approved to be able to do anything. But the anecdotal experience that people were reporting were things that were very robust and very consistent. So there's a trade-off when you're looking at natural leaf kratom between some of the potential public health benefits and some of the public health risks of using the products. But in every iteration, you ended up increasing the risk profile without increasing the potential for benefit for those populations. So for all of the products that came out from 2023 until now, and all these new iterations of these isolated concentrated opioid stimulating type products, the risk is way, way worse than any of the potentials for benefits. And as you go backwards, is there a product type that maybe having more public health benefit than it does for risk? The only one that we can really say with confidence that it would be able to do that is the natural leaf product, especially if you're going to be doing something to be able to remove the 7OH products, which is what the FDA recommendation is now for the DEA to schedule the 7OH products, you know, to effectively ban their sales. You know, what are you going to do for all of the people who are now addicted to those 7OH products? And what are they going to be using, right? So one of the things that people would say is, well, you could always just use FDA-approved therapies. But one of the issues is that the US healthcare system has a number of people who have no healthcare coverage at all. We also have a lot of people who have healthcare coverage, but they have high deductible plans. So until they spend $12,000, $15,000, they have no health coverage, and they're making $60,000, $70,000 a year. They can't afford to be able to do that. Some people who need to go to rehab don't have the ability to go to rehab because they can't be away from their job for a week and a half or for two weeks because any hour that they don't work, they don't get paid for. So there's also people who've used FDA-approved products, and the FDA-approved products have not worked for them. But they're saying that these products did work for them and were helpful to them. So one of the really despicable things that happened in this marketplace when the 7OH products first came out is that the companies were giving free samples to the people who were using leaf kratom products to be able to try this new product. And they told them that these products were kratom. But what happened is that when the people took these products, they ended up getting a euphoric feeling that they had not gotten on the leaf kratom products, but were exactly like the experiences that they had had when they were abusing oxycodone, when they were abusing heroin, when they were abusing fentanyl. And it ended up causing a number of people who had regained control over their lives and had been pulling themselves out of addiction, going back to work and caring for their families to fall back into uncontrolled addiction that ended up significantly harming their lives. So I think in a nutshell, right, that that is a good overview. So let's just talk for a second about the available animal studies. And when you look at all the animal studies together, what you see is that the 7OH products, when they have been studied in rats or in beagle dogs, have the same potential to cause addiction as prescription opioids. So if you're not selling morphine or oxycodone in a gas station, you shouldn't be selling 7OH products there. The same potential for rapid tolerance. Rapid tolerance means that a few days go by and one tablet's no longer enough for you to get the same experience you got before. You need to take more, right? And then you take more and more. So over the course of time, people can go from being in control to being out of control and then end up wasting their life savings over the course of just a few months on trying to get these products. This one is really huge, and this is respiratory depression potential. So the ability that someone is going to stop breathing on those products. When you look at the mitrogynin, which is one of the extracts in natural kratom, you can see that it has virtually no ability to cause respiratory depression. And as you increase the dose, the risk doesn't become elevated. But the risks when you look at 7OH products are exactly the same. The withdrawal symptoms are much worse with 7OH than mitrogynin products, but they're exactly the same as with prescription opioids. And there's one animal study that was really important, and then we'll open it up and see if you have any other questions. But they had taken mice that were addicted to morphine, and then they gave them access to either mitrogynin or 7OH. And none of the rats wanted to take the mitrogynin. All the rats wanted to take the 7OH. So then they segregated the rats, and they only gave them access to mitrogynin or to 7OH, right? The rats that ended up using the mitrogynin for a period of time, when they put them back on morphine, they were using lower doses of morphine than before they started. So the mitrogynin was not reinforcing the opioid effects. But in the rats that were given 7OH, not only did they increase the amount of 7OH that they were taking, when they went back to morphine, they required higher doses of morphine than when they had made the switch to 7OH. So the investigators there had said very clearly that a 7OH is acting exactly like an opioid with the same risk potential. And that that is one of the, one of the riskiest parts of having those types of therapies. And then, you know, the final piece is this piece. Once you take it out of the natural leaf formulation and you only have the alkaloid, whether it is mitrogynin or whether it is seven hydroxy mitrogynin or mitrogynin pseudoindoxyl, you could now take this flavorless alkaloid, and you could put it with whatever flavorings that you want to, okay? And so, you know, some of the products went along the lines of trying to tell people that you would have an opioid-like effect by calling their products perks for Percocets, right? Or Roxy's for roxicodone. But, you know, they were 7OH-type products. Or this product here that was saying, you know, rave, right? Rave doesn't seem like you're going to be having good control. Other companies went along the route of trying to be able to have something that would appeal specifically to children and young adults and make you think that the products didn't have high risk. So look at these Ome's cones products, right? In this purple packaging, and the drug is in this little ice cream cone. And they tell you that these two cones are six servings, so that you should only be eating one-third of one of those little ice cream cones, right? Vanilla flavored on the bottom. And here they have, you know, this purple type flavoring there on the top. Here's a product down at the bottom, sold right next to the Mentos in gas stations called Smurfs, right? And you can see that it is blue razz flavored, right? So they come in a variety of different flavors, fun different flavors. They come in sweet and sugary type products. And then the one in the middle, if anybody is, you know, using Zins or knows about Zin for, you know, nicotine, right, for people that used to chew tobacco, that's been very popular with children. So people are trying to make a seven hydroxy product using the same type of buckle pouches in order to try to attract a younger generation of people to using those products. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you that you have.
Doctor, in Springfield, we lose two people a week to fentanyl and heroin. And if you include alcohol addiction, it's three. That's 150 lines a year that we're losing for overdosing. Is there a danger of this drug causing overdosing?
So with the 7OH products, we know that there are six reported deaths. In those deaths, the people had taken alcohol along with that product. But it's probably grossly underestimating the risk. So remember that before February of 2025, there wasn't even a code to separate out 7OH from regular kratom, right? Or from other kratom-type products. The other thing is that when somebody dies on the street and they come in and you're going to be taking blood to test them, you test them based on this routine screen that you do for the most common drugs of addiction. So if somebody doesn't come in and say, hey, I was using 7OH products, or my family member was using those products, or they bring in the packaging, chances are they're, they would not have been testing for 7OH. So one of the things that the 7OH people will tell you is, oh, well, there's not a lot of deaths, you know, associated with the number of sales. But the problem is that most doctors, most pharmacists, nurses, and medical examiners didn't know that 7OH was its own discrete thing. And even if you tested for regular kratom, you were testing for mitrogynin, not testing for seven hydroxy mitrogynin, and you would have missed it in the people's postmortems. There's a number of other cases that I'm aware of that haven't been published yet where people are starting to come out of the woodwork and, you know, be able to report that, yes, their family member had had these issues. One of the most compelling was was this woman. And let me see. Oh, so it was it was this. So this father of two ended up going into a store and saw this watermelon-flavored product, right, that was being sold in a gas station and thought that it looked like it was low risk. There's the product there on the bottom. And it said it was going to give him some increased energy. So he started using it. And within a few times, he ended up getting addicted. And then he ended up going in and on 70 different occasions over two months was spending between $100 and $200 on these tablets, okay? And then the stress and the financial strain that he was causing his his family, and then his inability to be able to provide for them if he was going to go into rehab, ended up causing him to commit suicide. So animal studies are very clear that the respiratory depression potential of these drugs are exactly the same when you're talking about these 7OH products, exactly the same as what you would get with regular opioids. So here is the first reported case of respiratory and cardiac arrest from a 7OH product, right? Now, this patient ended up getting naloxone, came to, and then told people that he was on 7OH. Had this patient died, right, and was brought in, no one would have thought to test for 7OH, and it would have gone unattributed to the 7OH product, right? They would have come in, he would have died, they would have saw his high alcohol content, and they would have been like, oh, well, he died from alcohol poisoning, right? But when they gave him naloxone, even though he still had all the alcohol he had two minutes before, he started breathing again and ended up coming back because the main culprit was this 7OH product. And this product, interestingly, and this is what a number of the manufacturers do, said that the serving size was one quarter of a tablet. But the tablet isn't even scored to cut it into fourths, right? So you can't possibly reliably cut the tablet into fourths. And he wasn't using one quarter. He was using four of those tablets.
Thank you, doctor. I just want to announce that we are joined here by Maria Perez via Zoom as well as Victor Devilla just for edification of everyone watching. I just had some, just a first, a technical question, just so I'm on the same page there, doctor. 7OH and seven hydro-
Seven hydroxy mitrogynin?
That's the same thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So just a technical question there. Can you, are pharmacists allowed or doctors allowed to give prescriptions for kratom? Or is it, it's not, can you explain that part of it? If somebody wanted kratom under a doctor's supervision, how do they go about doing it? It's not FDA-approved, so how can they do that?
Yeah, so it's it's not FDA-approved, so you can't write a prescription for it. It's not an over-the-counter product, right? So the only thing that they would be able to do is, you know, monitor you for it and then give you guidance for how you would want to treat that if you were going to be doing self-treatment. By and large, a lot of the people who have good access to the current healthcare system start out using FDA-approved therapies first, right? And so that would clearly be the recommendation that any health provider would would give people. Try your Suboxone, try your Methadone, try Naltrexone, either alone or, you know, in combination. Before you would try to turn to one of these alternative kinds of therapies for your opioid addiction or to, you know, be able to try to treat your chronic pain that's overlaid on opioid addiction.
And secondly, could you explain, it's been kratom or gas station heroin has been described as the sensation is heroin light. Can you, so basically, is the idea that you could overdose on kratom itself? Or secondly, it's just the gateway drug to heroin? Is that what it is? Or can you explain that part of it?
Yeah, so a few different things. One is that a leaf kratom product is very unlikely to give anybody a euphoric effect, right? So that feeling of euphoria that's that is the really desired overall effect. Right, so that feeling of euphoria that's, that, uh, is the really desired overall effect of taking an opioid product. Um, would seven O H give you that euphoric effect? Yes, would it give you the same kind of effect as if you were taking morphine? Yes, right, so is it heroin light? Yes, but why is it heroin light? It's heroin light because in the first wave of the opioid epidemic, people started taking oxycodone and hydromorphone predominantly as the opioids that they were getting hooked on. And when that was no longer strong enough to be able to give them what it was that they wanted, those people ended up switching over to heroin. And then over the course of time, heroin ended up not being strong enough for what it was that they needed. And then people started switching over to fentanyl type products. So its potency is the same or a little bit more than what you would get from morphine, oxycodone and hydromorphone, right? It's not quite as potent, especially when you start talking about fentanyl type products. But the big thing to remember is that in the second and third wave of the opioid epidemic, when deaths started dramatically increasing, it was because it was the conversion of people who ended up getting hooked on oxycodone and hydromorphone in the first wave that were then progressing through their natural staging of untreated addiction to starting to use injectable heroin and fentanyl products. So the big risk here is that we're just at the tip of the iceberg and that all of the people becoming addicted to opioid products now over the course of the next twenty to twenty five years are going to be following that pattern of addiction and becoming more and more at risk of dying, right? Once they start using those products. So a few percentage of people every year convert over from using oral opioids to using IV opioids. And when they convert over to using the injectable forms, their overall risk of getting infections, getting HIV, getting hepatitis B, right? Or blood infections ends up going up precipitously. Also, their risk of overdosing ends up going up precipitously. The mitrogynin, uh, products, the natural leaf kratom products are not going to cause somebody to stop breathing, right? So that risk is, uh, is taken away. But the seven O H risk is certainly. There and it would be similar to getting a morphine type or oxycodone type product.
One last quick question, I know we have, uh, Victor Devilla wants to ask a question. Um, you, you referred this as the, to this as the fourth wave of the opioid epidemic. Are, what stage of the fourth wave are we in? The beginning stage or the, I mean, where, where about are we?
Yeah, so. In early twenty twenty four, right, when I was going out and, and telling people just how risky the animal data suggested the products were, I think we had the opportunity to be able to stop the fourth wave of the opioid epidemics. But right now, I think that, you know, we're, uh, we're in this fourth wave where we're accumulating a number of new people that are either becoming addicted or people who were controlled with their opioid addiction, who are now falling out of control because they had switched over to these seven O H products. Um, that there is going to be a wave, how big is that wave ultimately gonna be? I think depends on what it is that we're doing now. And I think the reason that the FDA came out and said, we should be banning seven O H products, although they specifically said, right, that this does not apply to natural leaf kratom products. That, uh, you know, they're concerned enough that we needed to take immediate action and I, I do think that action is, is really, really, uh, prudent. So I'd been trying to work with different state legislatures to get them to see, you know, some of the risks of seven O H products. Uh, you know, we, we had a lot done in the summer of twenty twenty four and then several states ended up coming out with either bans, uh, you know, on seven O H products, bans along with regulations of other kratom products, which I think also needs to, uh, happen, right? So when some people were, uh, were saying, well, you know, should we ban or should we do regulation to kratom? Knowing that kratom are many different things all under this umbrella, the answer isn't one or the other, it's ban all the ones that are really bad, but then put sensible regulations in place for leaf kratom products like you would for things like alcohol, right? No sales for people under the age of twenty one, pre-registration of products, no candy formulations. Right, and then proper labeling of each of the products for sample sizes. And then if a product is, uh, looking like it's going to be like a very concentrated type product, you know, you have this little shop, but there's like three servings, you would need to put an oral syringe, you would need to put something else to let people know that those doses were, uh, not something that you would anticipate by looking at the bottle. So I, so I do think that there's, uh, you know, a number of things, all of these synthetic concentrated products, whether they're seven O H, mitrogynin pseudo indoxyl, the MGM fifteen, the MGM sixteen, that just need to be banned, right? I don't think there's any way that you can make them safe enough. The natural leaf products, I think you could, uh, uh, have a net public benefit by having sensible regulations. And then you're gonna have to decide, you know, uh, what you do about the mitrogynin extracts, right? The risk is lower than with these synthetic products, but they're more than with the natural leaf products. And, you know, where is that break even point? And, uh, you know, the, the major researchers at the University of Florida and I, when we look at the data, we don't have good information on that because, uh, you know, it's, it's just the nature of the literature base that we currently, uh, that we currently have to go on.
And, and just one quick question before I get to Victor. The states that have banned it, Alabama, New Orleans, um, excuse me, Louisiana, Alabama, Arkansas. Well, tho- those aren't states that traditionally come to mind as, uh, with, uh, uh, of regulatory framework on medical. Uh, why, why were those states hit by kratom to such an extent that they decided to ban it? Like, do you have any insight into that? I mean, was those states somehow targeted by manufacturers of this, uh, seven O H or?
So I think what, uh, I think what happened in a lot of these states is that, um, there's nuance, like we were talking about earlier and some of the differences with some of the different products. But I think what happened is that since they were all being labeled just as kratom inside the people's minds, right, that they were all kratom. And that leaving kratom as something that was, uh, able to be sold was a net negative for public health, right? And I do believe that that is, uh, that that's true. But once you start subdividing into different types of kratom derived products, right? You can see marked differences between them that, uh, need a little bit more nuance. So in places like Colorado and Nebraska, uh, you know, and um, a number of other states that have kratom consumer protection acts or the KCPAs. Um, they've gone the route of trying to do this on a regulatory basis and many of them do ban seven O H products in that, uh, in that process. So that's, um, our bias at the Kratom Consumer Advisory Council that, uh, that I lead, but I think in, in some of those other states, right? It, it is easier to ban everything, right? Than it is to have something that is, uh, that's more nuanced. It makes it easier when you go in and anything that, uh, sounds like it may be kratom confiscating it. Anything that sounds like kratom is automatically, uh, banned. So it's, it, it is easier to enforce if there's nothing. But I don't know if that's the best for, uh, for public health. Just because we have this, uh, you know, giant hole in, uh, the safety net that we currently have for vulnerable individuals. And if you don't give them any alternative to being able to get off their illicit opioids, you may be pushing them back to using illicit opioids. And we know the overall risk profile of those people is incredibly high. Their risk of dying from overdose, the risk of getting bloodborne infections and just their inability to be able to care for themselves, to be able to care for others, be able to work and be productive members of society is dramatically reduced.
Uh, we have counselor Devilla, uh, Victor, if you want to ask a question. Can I mute yourself, uh, Victor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Dr. White, thank you for that very thorough presentation. Uh, I have some quick questions, uh, first, uh, I thank you to the chair, uh, and the committee for bringing this, uh, issue to light. Uh, Dr. White, I have to admit that I have never heard of kratom until about two weeks ago. Uh, so I deeply appreciate, uh, your, uh, your, uh, your presentation. So let me just do the very basics here. Kratom, um, I was just looking, uh, some, uh, doing a quick search. I believe is the natural herb, correct? Is the natural herb seven, uh, O H is the, is the, is the kratom, correct?
Yeah, so the, so the seven O H, uh, what they do is they extract the mitrogynin from the leaf. Right, so they're taking just that one alkaloid out. And then they are oxidizing it and it sounds like a number of the people are oxidizing it with pool shock to turn it into seven O H to get that seven hydroxy group to go on that ring structure to be able to create the, the seven O H.
Now, I deeply believe in a case that you, you showed us a little while ago, the person, Dita, would go, um, with kratom that had contained seven O H, right?
Yep.
And they would go about with Narcan, which only works in opioids.
Uh, what was the last thing that you said?
Uh, it was, your person was, was stated with Narcan, which only works.
Yes, yep, so, yep, Narcan works, uh, works equally as well on seven O H as it does with all the other opioids.
Okay, now, uh, I did a, the question I did is, there's, uh, the prolonged effect of being on seven O H. I believe I saw, and the one that I found the most disturbing was, of course, you know, you can have a specific distress, agitation, insomnia, hypertension, pachyria. But I also saw seizures. And that aligned with quite a bit, you know, um, some, you can have people driving kratom and then develop a seizure while they're driving, so, um, 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 Mr. Chair, is the proposal to ban kratom out of drive throughout the city? Or we, that's exactly the proposal that, uh, that we have.
Go ahead.
Victor, I apologize, you have to speak up a little further.
You're asking about kraton being banned. Not the seven O H.
Yeah, I think ma- looking at, first of all, number one, the, the law department did a great job quickly putting this ordinance together, looking at the schedule of, of, uh, city council meetings. Um, this bans seven O H, um, I don't know if it needs clarification of simply saying uh, kratom in its seven O H form. I don't know if that would make a distinction, uh, maybe I'll leave that to, uh, Tom Moore and Solicitor, uh, County to talk, uh, about that. Does this cover, uh, kratom, the leaf form, banning it or, or the seven O H? This would ban all kratom from what I see right here. So, um, this would ban kratom, uh, as a, as a drug that's not, um, supervised by a doctor or approved by the F D, FDA. And, and it would ban kratom in its seven O H form, that's where it's written explicitly.
So Dr. White, uh, uh, just to play devil's advocate for a second, uh, what do we tell the people? Because we are being manipulated the last two weeks with people, uh, in favor of kratom. And so during my due diligence, uh, what do we tell those people that, or damn it, appears to be working?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a, I think that that's ultimately a really big, uh, risks, right? So on the Kratom Consumer Advisory Council, we have, uh, this woman who, uh, you know, has really, really horrible, uh, intractable pain, right? So then she, uh, doesn't have the ability to use some of her limbs and she has severe, uh, you know, disabilities. Um, and kratom has given her the ability to be able to continue to, uh, to function. I mean, it doesn't take away some of the bad, uh, uh, effects of her underlying disease, right? But it's giving her something that has the ability to, uh, to function. There was one person who, uh, you know, had, um, chronic pain and ended up getting addicted to opioids and then was not able to, uh, care for his family, was not able to do other things. And then, uh, when he ended up moving on to, uh, to kratom, then, um, you know, he was able to get back towards, uh, more normalcy. There's another person, uh, who was using it just recreationally opioids, ended up moving on to fentanyl. And, uh, you know, he had tried to use Suboxone, but the Suboxone was like three hundred dollars a month and he couldn't afford to be able to use the product and then be able to afford the other things that he needed, like rent and food and whatnot. So, uh, you know, he had tried kratom and the, the natural leaf form of kratom was able to control his addiction like what the Suboxone was doing for him in a way that allowed him to continue to function. So the, the big concern I think that you're bringing up, Victor, is, is a really important one. And that is, uh, that we have millions of people in the country that are not fully aligned with the healthcare system, either because they can't afford it, right? They can't go and do, uh, the normal things that, uh, that they need to do. And if you don't give them any opportunity or any way out, you run the risk that they're gonna start using illicit products. And those illicit products have inherent risks, right? So some of the risks is that the products are not well mixed, right? So when you put in all of the powders, the actives and the inactive powders in order to be able to create your product, if you don't mix them properly, one person can get a much more potent dose, right? And then somebody who's getting something on the other end of the vat that wasn't properly mixed would get much less than what they were getting before. A lot of the products are adulterated, so you think that you're buying an oxycodone tablet, but they ran out of oxycodone and they weren't gonna stop making the tablets because they still wanted to get your money and they're illegal drug sellers. But what do they care about quality control? So they add whatever it is that they do have into those products, right? And so we know that, uh, about one third of the products that are illicit opioids now are being, um, adulterated with xylazine, which is an animal tranquilizer. And Connecticut, Massachusetts, uh, and then across and up into Toronto, Canada. So through New York, uh, Chicago, Detroit, um, they're using another animal tranquilizer in some of their products called metotomidine. And those products, if it causes respiratory depression, naloxone doesn't work really well because it's an animal tranquilizer and it's not an opioid, right? So, um, there are a number of different risks from illicit opioids and I think that you need to think about the balance between the benefits and the risks when you're looking at, uh, those, um, types of products. And I think that this might be helpful also. This is the best information, uh, that's currently available about natural leaf kratom products, right? So it isn't a risk free activity to use a natural leaf kratom product. So natural leaf kratom is here in this, uh, light green. Um, so it is the, uh, the fifth one over. So if you look at heroin here in black and people's ability to fulfill their obligations, you can see that there's forty percent of people who cannot fulfill their obligations when they're using a cocaine or heroin product. That's really, really low for kratom. So if you can get somebody on an illicit opioid to move from using heroin to using kratom, that there's a net positive for society. But there are some people that are using kratom that do, that do not have the ability to fulfill their obligations, right? Even while using kratom. But that's similar to the number of people that are using ultra. But that's similar to the number of people that are using ultra-processed foods or people that are using caffeine. In terms of overall social ills, it's much less if you're using kratom than if you're using heroin or cocaine. And look at alcohol here in light gray, right? Alcohol has a tremendous ability to be able to reduce people's ability to fulfill their obligations and to cause social problems. Here you see that caffeine has virtually no ability to make you, uh, cause social problems, right? But kratom is aligned with cannabis here in terms of causing social problems and it's overall pretty low. Unsafe use is relatively low and then use despite harm, right? Is also very low with the product. So it's not nothing. And there can be good regulation that you could have for kratom products at the state level that hopefully the state would end up, uh, would end up putting into, um, into place. But I think there's, there's going to be a trade-off if you get rid of all kratom products. And there's going to be some people who are going to be harmed in that process because you're giving them no alternative except to use that, right? And the only other alternative to illicit opioids is, uh, Imodium A D, right? So Imodium A D is a drug that's for people who have diarrhea. And it does stimulate opioid receptors and that's why it stops you from getting diarrhea. The thing with Imodium A D is that it doesn't penetrate into the brain very well at all. But there are people before kratom was out and even while kratom was out, but people who hadn't heard about kratom, who were going to stores and were buying bottles and bottles and taking handfuls of pills in order to be able to give them an opioid effect from Imodium A D, right? And there was somebody that I knew, uh, that was, uh, a family friend, um, who ended up dying from using Imodium A D, ended up getting an arrhythmia because it can, you know, cause this, uh, this risk of arrhythmia when, when you're taking such high doses. And no one even knew she had an opioid problem, right? So she didn't want to tell her family and her friends that she was addicted to opioids. She ended up getting addicted, you know, because she had pain, it was prescribed to her, it wasn't really something of her own choosing. But she didn't want to let people know and she was suffering alone, even though she could have had healthcare coverage in order to be able to help her. So any of these alternatives that currently exist have some potential risk and you needed to take the comparative risks into effect when you're trying to make some of these decisions.
Uh, Solicitor Bona County?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Dr. White, I have a question for you about the definition. I've heard you and I, I, I respect everything that you've said. The challenge that the Law Department has is how to define kratom to be able to keep it current with all the scientific advancement. What we're facing right now is we've done, the city has passed a synthetic cannabis ban because of all the manipulation of THC. CBD products, I think you're familiar with, that are much packaged the same as kratom. But we're almost at, we're going to be having to come back before the City Council to make some adjustments to that just because science is, is moving along so fast that we're, we, we struggle to be able to capture it. Is there language out there that you are really comfortable with trying to balance? Natural leaf kratom and regulating that in addition to the ban? Because I'll be honest with you, in our, our speediness to this, we have just outright banned kratom and any derivative of that product just because it's simpler to do.
Yeah, so, uh, what we're, what we're recommending is that for any product, it has to have less than 2% of the total alkaloids be seven O H. And it can't have any mitriginin pseudoindoxyl or any MGM 15 or MGM 16. So, uh, the natural leaf doesn't have any seven O H in it. But when you pick that natural leaf and you do the drying, somewhere in the neighborhood of like 0.5 up to around 1.5% of the, uh, total alkaloid content from the mitriginin can be converted into seven O H. So you can have these trace amounts of seven O H in natural leaf kratom products, right? So, uh, what we're recommending as the KCAC is that the, um, seven O H concentration, the dose can't be more than 2% of the dose of all of the other alkaloids that's inside that product, right? We also are saying though, that there can't be any flavored products, right? So if you go into any store and you see that there's a product that is blue razz flavored, if there's anything that's in a gummy, if there's, right? So all of those products would be products that you would just be able to swipe, right? The, the leaf kratom products are the ground up leaf, right? They have this light greenish, uh, appearance, the capsules are, are large and, you know, it, it is a different beast than, um, those other, uh, those other products, right? And then, you know, any of those products, like any other, uh, dietary ingredient, you can't have any vaping products, you can't have any sublingual strips, you can't have any buckle pouches, right? So the product has to be something that you are, uh, that you're swallowing, right? And it can't have, uh, any sugared candy or artificial or, uh, naturally flavored, appealing, um, things for, uh, for children. And if you go on the, uh, the Kratom Consumer Advisory Council position statement, just put that in your, uh, search. You can come up and you could see all of our, um, position statements on, you know, what we would do if we were putting in regulations. And what we had put in is, you know, how, uh, places like Nebraska and Colorado and Utah ended up writing their state laws for their kratom consumer protection acts.
Uh, can I ask you a follow-up? I don't know if you have this, Dr. But, um, again, I'm going to link it back to what we do with synthetic cannabinoids. We immediately got threatened with a lawsuit on a certain product, a certain manufacturer of those products. With this being, again, the Wild West, do you know, are there multiple, are there like, just, just a whole spread of manufacturers that are producing this product? I guess that's one. I'm trying to understand the background to all that.
Yeah, so we took, uh, we took.
I can ask a second question before you answer. If we don't ban kratom outright, what is to stop a manufacturer from falsifying or not properly documenting what is in their product? And in fact, still selling a product that has seven O H or MGM 15 or 16 in it? And in fact, it's not really, um, the packet when it's not, since FDA is not approving these products.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, a few different things. So we took UConn Pharmacy students and then, uh, we had them as different research projects, go through and see how many seven O H products they could find, right? And there's over a hundred of those, uh, products that are currently available. You know, there's, uh, a number of different, you know, groups that are making the, uh, the individual products, but some of them have multiple different, uh, product lines under the same manufacturers or distributors. There's, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of a little less than 50, um, mitriginin pseudoindoxyl products that, uh, uh, that currently exist. And we were able to show a couple dozen products, uh, you know, that would violate what would be in our creative consumer protection acts because they were vaping products or they were, uh, products that would, you know, dissolve on, under your tongue or between your, uh, your cheek and gum, that we think should be, uh, that we think should be banned. So, um, you know, could people, uh, try to game the, uh, the system? In one of our, um, position statements, what we end up saying is that, you know, we think that there should be a pre-registration process and that only products that have gone through the pre-registration process can be sold within your state, right? So I guess here it would be, you know, within your city limits, which means that any company that wants to sell those products would have to be, would have to provide you with the front and the back of their packaging. And so you could look at their packaging and you could see whether or not it told people that you can't sell it if you are, uh, to people under the age of 21. You know, does it say that it is habit-forming? Does it have directions for use? Does it have, uh, you know, uh, a serving size that's been, um, identified? But they also need to provide you a certificate of analysis or a COI from an independent laboratory. So they needed to take their product and send it for independent laboratory analysis. And then you'd be able to look at the products and see whether or not the products are contaminated with heavy metals, whether the products, uh, you know, what alkaloids they have in the product. And then you could make them do the math for you, right? To be able to show them, well, here are the alkaloids that we found. And when you add up all of these and, you know, you divide the seven O H by the total number of alkaloids, is it less than 2%? So when you get that information, then the product can become registered, that product can be sold. And then you would know that it is, uh, a product. So if you wanted to allow not only leaf kratom products, but also mitriginin extract products to be sold, right? That, that's probably what you would need to do. It's harder to be able to adulterate or do crazy things with natural leaf kratom because it's just the ground up leaf, right? It's, it's harder to do funny business to, uh, to the ground up leaves.
Uh, Ellen?
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, let me thank you, Doctor, for this amazing presentation. I appreciate, um, being educated and I think we all are through, uh, what you have given us on today. Uh, I am the Commissioner of Health and Human Services for the city. And in that role, um, we have the opportunity to work with a public health council as well. That does include physicians and nurses and others who, um, have an interest in, uh, certainly banning products that are going to be harmful to the residents of the city. The, the distinction I think, uh, that needs to be made, and you've made it very nicely and very convincingly, is the difference between natural kratom and synthetic, uh, krat, or kratom, um, that has been altered. Uh, many of the cities and towns around us have gone through this process. And where the sticking point is, is how to define, uh, natural versus, uh, enhanced or what you described. And so I'm wondering in the language that is, and I will go to, um, the website, but in the language, do you have, do you, how do you recommend that we parse out the differences? Because individuals, O U D, um, individuals really came out strongly around this helps us in many cases when we don't have access, uh, to other forms of, um, you know, of, of other forms that would enable us to mitigate, um, our need or our ability to have, um, uh, opioid responses to certain drugs. So how do you in language parse out the difference or would recommend? I am going to take this ordinance, which I'm just seeing today, um, and take it back through our normal process to meet with, um, those physicians and nurses who advised myself and the mayor. And so that's my question to you. How do you parse out the differences in language?
Yeah, it, uh, it can be a little bit, uh, it can be a little bit tricky, right? So I think that, uh, it's very easy if you look at any of the ingredients and you see that there's mitriginin pseudoindoxyl or if you see that there's MGM 15 or MGM 16. Some people are tricky, right? They call their mitriginin pseudoindoxyl red O H rather than calling it, uh, mitriginin pseudoindoxyl in order to, uh, uh, to, to trick you. And then, um, you need to, uh, look at all the ingredients that are there, right? That's inside of the product to make sure that there are multiple alkaloids. And that when you take the seven O H dose and then you divide it by the dose, when you add up all the alkaloids, that it has to be less than 2% of the total, right? So that's, that's math and that's, uh, you know, going to be a little bit, a little bit tricky. But if you have the pre-registration program, right? We can, uh, uh, go through and show people how to do that math. And then once somebody has done it a couple of times, it would be easier for them to, uh, to do it. I do believe that the global kratom coalition has, you know, a listing of a number of different, uh, natural leaf, um, products, you know, that they know would, would meet the KCAC type specifications. But I don't know if they have, you know, whether or not that's a, a complete list or, um, you know, if there's others. But if, if it gets you 70 or 80% of the way there and then somebody else wants to petition to be able to say, well, our product also meets this and here's the proof, you know, then you could adjudicate that, um, individually.
Would you recommend leaving natural leaf out of any regulations and or ordinance? And have the ordinance focus on seven O H and, uh, is it MGM 15 and 16? So would those be the types of language we should put in our document in order to satisfy the, um, and satisfy the language that we need in this ordinance or regulation?
Yeah, man, I, I think you could get yourself, uh, you know, like 75% of the, of the way to enhance safety just by making sure that there is no products with seven O H concentrations greater than 2%. No mitriginin pseudoindoxyl slash red O H and then no MGM 15 or 16. You know, this has nothing to do with, uh, with kratom. But before the seven O H stuff came out, I think what tipped off some of these companies that you could actually sell potent opioids to people and get away with it is because of T-ineptine. T-ineptine is an antidepressant drug that was sold in Europe and somebody decided to just start selling it in the United States, saying that it was a dietary supplement. And they were able to get away with it and they had, you know, several hundreds of millions of dollars worth of sales. It wasn't a very strong, uh, opioid. It was a whole lot stronger than mitriginin, but it wasn't morphine-related, uh, strong. But even though the FDA has come down and none of them can say that they're dietary supplements, there's a number of individual states that had to go through to be able to ban T-ineptine. So if you wanted to have a ban on all concentrated synthetic opioid products, you could come up with a ban against T-ineptine as well as concentrated, isolated seven O H products, mitriginin pseudoindoxyl products or MGM 15 or 16 products. Right now, I don't know of any, uh, MGM 16 products that are being sold. MGM 15 is being sold as a bulk powder, not really as individual products. But I do know that there are some companies that their exit strategy, if the DEA bans seven O H, is to take out the seven O H and then replace it with MGM 15 as their active ingredient, right? So I think if, uh, if your ban is only for seven O H, it'll be good for a while, but then you'll have to come back and, uh, probably refine it when, when people make the substitute. And that's not any different than what people did back in the day with, uh, with bath salts. You know, the, uh, uh, synthetic cathinone products where they just kept swapping one out for the other. And as And as they, people went through and they started banning this one, they just put another one in and then you ban that one and they put another one in. And it was this, uh, giant game of, uh, of whack-a-mole.
Just a question there, uh, Doc, how do you spell T-ineptine? Uh, how's that spelt?
Yeah, so it's T-I-A-N-E-P-T-I-N-E.
Thank you. Well, um, I don't know, Solicitor Bonacani or Tom Moore, do you have any further questions for, uh, the doctor?
No, it's very good.
Helen?
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, Maria Perez, Maria? Are you on mute? Oh, there you go.
Hello, everyone. Well, I have been taking notes and I think from the legislative part, um, I have received many letters from the constituents. Um, just, um, noticing that we're going to ban the, the, the crampton leaf. Um, so I think at this point, there's other questions, how I'm going to go back. And thank you, Doctor, for clarifying all this information. I think we have, we just, um, have to come back and look overall, like, uh, Commissioner Helen Colton has said in terms of the ordinance. So hopefully tonight we are able to get some directions, um, what's the next step? Thank you so much.
Thanks, Maria.
You're welcome. And I mean, you guys are our, uh, neighbors to the north. So if there's a way that I can, uh, help you, if you have any additional questions, just, uh, let me know. Sir, would you like to say something?
Yeah, if I may, absolutely.
It's an open meeting.
I'm, I'm John Shenholzer. Um, I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I'm the Director of American Veterans for Kratom Safe. But if you Google me and, and chat me, you'll see that I'm very well-known in addiction recovery industry. I've been cleaning sober forty-three years.
Congratulations.
I got cleaning the Marine Corps in between my second, third deployment. But I, but I helped create the, uh, the peer support provider industry in America. You know, twenty-plus years ago, me and my wife opened a nonprofit in Virginia, which is the national model for peer recovery support service provider. Uh, in twenty twelve, I got the Narcan bill passed in Virginia, the first red state. Put Samaritan Bill, got mental health addiction parity, put in the Affordable Care Act. Got, uh, mental health addiction parity passed in two thousand and eight. And Congress, I'm, I'm just an advocate, a recovery warrior. I know my business. Um, fifteen years ago, we started tracking kratom for harm reduction product. And, and in NIDA, uh, Norvold called Director of NIDA, has invested over a hundred million dollars in, in scientific studies on, on harm reduction purposes for kratom. So the bottom line is, it's, it's one of the best harm reduction tools out there. Anytime you get a navigator, that doctor had a fabulous chart. You get folks to pivot from one pill pills to a, a GMP kratom product, which happened to be an FDA regulatory product, protocol product. So the FDA does have a little role in here already. And actually, you asked so many great questions and, and I've been sitting through these hearings for several years now. And this is the best one I've ever been in to have Dr. White there. I don't know the guy, never met him. And I'm thinking, holy smoke, everybody ought to be hearing this before they make knee-jerk reaction decisions to some hysteria that's floating around out there. But I just so happen to have some kratom here that, uh, it answered a lot of the questions. This is a GMP product, good manufacturing, uh, product. And, and this, everything is in there. This is a third-party testing, right? Exactly what he's talking about. It tells you what to, what to do, not to do, what to take, what to take, what if you're, if you're pregnant, if you're driving. It's got all the ingredients in it that, you know, the alkaloids are talking about. Excuse me, my lip is bad. But, um, the, and, and how you regulate it. Um, it's really simple. And this is the simplest solution ever, only and strictly only natural kratom products. It cannot be any chemical, any synthetic, no adulteration. It's not a hard thing for people to do and it, and it's called the kratom consumer protection.
Yeah, but unfortunately at the, at the, uh, gas stations and stuff, it isn't this.
It, no, well, you know what?
Big difference.
If, when you pass a kratom consumer protection act for Springfield or the state, does it for the state? All these problems go away overnight because that is the nature of every kratom-related problem we got. It's a synthetic alkaloid chemical. It's not this.
Well, thank you so much for that input. Now, everyone here at the meeting, we're, we're about fifteen minutes over. And, uh, again, uh, Dr. White, we appreciate your presentation. That was very informative. You gave us a, a, a great, uh, jumpstart on this legislation. Thanks again to Helen Colton Harris, Solicitor's Office. Uh, and, and one last question from Kencheck.
Uh, Doctor, is there any way, um, that you could send us some of that model language that we could use when we, uh, redraft our, um, section that deals with, uh, defining what the products are that we should ban and not ban?
Yes, definitely.
Perfect. You could send it to one of the chairman here, that would help us.
Thank you so much, Doctor, for your time. And, uh, again, uh, appreciate everyone's involvement and, uh, we'll continue the conversation tonight at seven P M in the city council chambers.
You have more stuff you want to hand out?
Doctor, may I just, one more. I, if I need to, and I'm going to present this to the public health council, the nurses and doctors I talked about. Would you be available if we wanted to bring you in, just answer some questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this concludes the hearing.